Now.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I call the Marlington Local School District Board of Education regular meeting to order on Thursday, March twentieth, two thousand twenty-one at seven o'clock P. M. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The reading of the mission statement will be by Mr. Josh Hagan.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Dr. May, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gaber?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Absent.
This, Mrs. Stevens?
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion that the Marlington Local Board of Education adopt the following agenda for the May twentieth, two thousand twenty-one meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections? I would like to just say there may be action taken under item B three for discussion of the meeting, and there was one action item added, which just was omitted to the, omitted on your final draft, under item E seven to accept the donation. So we, so there'll be action on the donations. Are there any other additions or corrections? Is there any discussion? Dr. May, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Abstain.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Five zero, passed.
One, I believe there was one abstained.
Four. Thank you. Thank you. Four, four one.
Thank you. Public participation. Dr. May, were any documents received from the public participation portion of tonight's meeting?
No documents were received.
Thank you. Special presentations. I'll turn this over to Dr. Mike Schuffler.
Good evening, everybody. We have a few special presentations tonight. This is always a great time of the year, and I said some kudos to each of our retirees as we accepted their retirements, but now we have just a few other words from some other folks for our retirees, so I'm going to turn it over to Ben.
After forty-two years of teaching kindergarten, Diane Kuntzman will be retiring at the end of the school year. Everyone always says that it takes a special person to teach kindergarten, and those people are most definitely correct. However, to teach it for as long as Diane did, being special only scratches the surface. She had the opportunity to teach generations of Marlington families and by her count nearly thirteen hundred students. She will leave Washington having had a profound, lasting, and immeasurable impact on the students at Marlington Local School District. Next year, our doors at Washington will open, and we'll have another kindergarten teacher in room one oh six. But make no mistake, Diane Kuntzman's shoes cannot be filled. Her presence and expertise cannot be replaced. To simply say thank you for everything that she has done for this profession and for the students whose lives she's touched and molded would almost feel like a disservice. We as teachers enter the profession because we want to make a difference. We want to be able to look back over our careers and say, I made a difference. Well, I'm going to go out on a limb and say they say that Diane not only has made a difference, but she has made the world a better place. We will miss working with her every day. Finally, I would like to congratulate you on your retirement and wish you the best of luck as you begin the next chapter in your life. You have earned the right to kick back, relax, and enjoy those grandbabies. And from the bottom of my heart and all the students you have taught, thank you, Mrs. Kuntzman.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuntzman, for teaching us. 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 Thank you, Mrs. Kuntzman, for teaching us.
Good evening. I'm Renee Haley, the principal from Lexington Elementary School, and today I have the great privilege and honor of recognizing our head cook, Linda Carnes, and congratulating her on her retirement from Marlington Local Schools. Linda herself is a proud Marlington grad, has served thirty-one years in the kitchens of Marlington High School, Marlington Middle School, and most recently at Lexington Elementary School. As a cook and lunch lady, as she's affectionately called, Linda has seen countless students come through Marlington, greeting them each day with a smile and a kind word. She has gotten to know thousands of students over the years and considers it a joy to watch them come through her lunchline each day, doing her part to ensure that they get the nourishment they need to grow and thrive. Outside of school, Linda is married to her husband, John, and has two sons, Jeremy and TJ. She was a PTO mom and a Boy Scout mom with her sons while they were growing up. She is an active member of the Abiding Savior Church and Alliance, and when she isn't working, Linda volunteers at our local blood drives for the Red Cross. She loves traveling to see her grandkids as well as baking. Her plans after retirement are to travel with her husband and to continue going to South Carolina each year with her sister Laura to visit their other sister Karen. Linda, you will be greatly missed by the students and staff alike. Thank you so much for all you have done for us and for everyone here at Marlington over the years. Your smile will be dearly missed in the lunchline, and you will forever be remembered here at Lexington as our lunch lady. Congratulations.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am joined today by Ms. Teresa O'Rourke, and it's my pleasure to honor her this evening as she will retire from the Marlington Local School District after serving Marlington Middle School for the past thirty-six years. Yes, all thirty-six years here at MMS. Teresa has been far more than just an employee. Teresa has been an amazing custodian, taking care of the middle school building, teachers, students, and staff like it was her home and her family. However, her greatest contribution has been being a role model for our students and our staff over the years. She is a servant leader who is as highly respected as anyone in our district. She will be missed dearly, but we are so excited for the opportunities retirement will bring her because she deserves these opportunities to do whatever she wants to do. Teresa, thank you so much for being a wonderful employee, a huge part of the success of our school, our school district, and our community. Thank you and enjoy.
I will, and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I have enjoyed being here the whole time. Never even felt like a job coming in and enjoying the kid, loving it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. Mrs. Mort from Marlboro Elementary. I have a distinct honor to introduce to you, Mrs. Mary Calandros. For the last twenty years, Mary has been the librarian of Marlboro Elementary. Mrs. Calandros has seen countless faces of Marlboro students during her twenty years in the library. She has read to them and told them many, many stories. She has shared with them her passion for literacy. She cares for her students and wants them to love and learn from books as she has. Let me share with you Mrs. Calandros' passion for reading. Mrs. Calandros, whole life she has dealt with finding, reading, and sharing stories. Even as a little girl, she would walk to the public library and explore worlds that she would otherwise have never known. She would bookmark her favorite pages and return to them time and again and smile. Her favorite stories always stayed with her, even after returning the books to the library. In a way, Mrs. Calandros is now turning in the book for the final time. She will now go into the next chapter of her life story, humbled by the new worlds she has opened up to children. Mrs. Calandros, we want to thank you for the past twenty years. You are bookmarked in our hearts. On behalf of Marlboro Elementary and Marilla Tumoco, we wish Mrs. Mary Calandros many blessings and enjoy the next chapter of her life. Thank you very much, Mrs. Mort, and thank you to Marlington Local Schools for giving me the honor and the privilege to work with all the fine staff and all the fine students that I have met here. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, and once again, congratulations. And then Ben, I understand we have presentations for our people with twenty years of service. Okay, thank you, Ben. And we do not have videos for our folk scholarship recipients, but I would like to recognize those students at this time. So congratulations to the following recipients of the two thousand twenty-one Folk Scholarship. McKenna Krieger going to Walsh University for nursing. Isaiah Harrison going to Ashland University for teacher education and is leaning toward being an intervention specialist. Philip Ryan, Stark State for business. Sidney Graffis for nursing. Kali Munaz for nursing. Nikki Montgomery, Bowling Green to major in Spanish. And Caitlin Engelhardt, speech language pathology with a minor in spectrum disorders. So congratulations to those students.
Yes, congratulations to our retirees, our staff with twenty years of service, and to our folk scholarship recipients. New business, Dr. Mike?
Okay, under new business, I have the first thing for you, and it will need its own vote, Apple iPad purchases.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the purchase of i, Apple iPads as presented?
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Mike or Patty, could you go over like the price and what group of students this will serve and where the funds will be coming forward to pay for this?
Patty, do you want to give those figures first?
I can do that. I have a quote here for our Apple, Apple iPads for a hundred and seventy thousand two hundred and forty-six. Our plan is to take that out of S R three funds.
And Mrs. Sutton, you can help if you want, but these are, remember, we are finishing our one-to-one initiative, and I believe we are also refreshing our i, iPads. You know, as they get certain age, we have to replace them.
What's the number of devices that we're purchasing?
We are purchasing four hundred and eighty, and those will also have cases with them.
And then which, which grades are these, is this group of iPads for?
Ben, you can chime in, but I believe we are fresh, refreshing for. Oh, go ahead. You're on there.
Yeah, Mrs. Sutton just messaged me that she's having trouble with her video coming on. This would be a refresh for third grade, sixth grade, and ninth grade. And then our plan is, since we refreshed the entire high school student population last year, also with S R funds, is to take those outgoing seniors' devices and the outgoing eighth graders' devices and use those to fill down to kindergarten first and second, where we kind of gather everything we had to facilitate the online learning and the one-to-one here over the past year, fill those in with proper up-to-date devices.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Pass five zero.
Okay, our next item is we have, I have on there for you to approve the purchase of our new cafeteria tables at Washington Elementary. If you're not aware, the tables at Washington are unique because they fold up into the wall because the cafeteria space is also the gymnasium. And interestingly enough, these, we believe, are the very original tables that came with the building when it was built, so we are not able to get any kind of parts for these tables. And, you know, in general, cafeteria tables are not cheap. You can imagine these are used every day. They get a lot of wear and tear. So I didn't think the quote was out of line then for those tables that are going to be specially built for Washington. I was glad that we were able to find a company to do that.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the purchase of new cafeteria wall unit tables from C and T Design and Equipment Company for Washington Elementary as presented?
So moved.
Second.
And is there any discussion?
I'm going to be voting no on this, not because I don't think that the students deserve tables or new tables, but one, this is for space that this district does not need. So I, in a building that we don't need due to our size and our enrollment, so I'll be voting no.
Dr. Mike, what is the cost of the tables?
I can tell you exactly. I think it's forty-two thousand. The, the bottom line, it's forty-four six seventy-seven seventeen, and that's everything. The building them and installing them, the maintenance on them. And we do, I know, I, we do have a warranty. I don't remember exactly the length of that, but that's the whole picture for those.
And the funds for this, are we able to pay for this out of S R funds since it's, you're kind of presenting it as like a safety issue, or, or is this going to be coming, how, how's this going to be funded?
Well, we talked about several. I talked with Patty in our treasure department about a couple of ways we could fund these. My initial thought was to wait and see, you know, how the remodeling goes. And at Washington, I was hoping we might be a little bit under budget and be able to use those funds. But then after we looked into it, I don't think it qualifies for S R funds. And then we have P I, permanent improvement funds, that we can tap into and use for this very sort of thing. So the decision was to go with the P I funds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion? Dr. May, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
No.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, four one.
And then I have a talk with Mrs. Gaber, just, you know, over the last little, maybe couple months, and I've talked to most of the board members about this, but we wanted to have a little bit of a discussion about future board meetings. I, I think we're on the same page that we could probably move to one board meeting a month. So we have that issue on the table, and then, you know, there's been with the CDC and with the Governor Dewine, there has been some lifting of requirements to, you know, people wearing masks, how many can come in a room. People are supposed to be vaccinated for those, not to wear a mask. So I guess we have two things to discuss. We need, have to discuss, are we going to keep it at two board meetings a month, or is one sufficient? And then in the future, then how will we conduct our board meetings?
As far as how many meetings a month, I mean, I'm, I'm good with whatever you think is necessary.
I recommend we try one meeting a month throughout the summer, and if we don't end up having to call additional special meetings, then we can then go ahead and put that on through the fall. So I would recommend we try it for three months.
I would agree with that. And in my experience, the two times when you sometimes really need a second meeting are right before school starts. Sometimes I ask the board, would ask for a sec, for a second meeting that month. And then once in a while, then as school ends in May, as you can see, there was quite a bit tonight, but mostly, the only time I found myself asking the board for that was right when school was going to start. So, but I agree with Mrs. Gaber. Let's try, I would say, let's try it for the summer and see how it works for us.
I agree as well.
So is there a motion to cancel the regular meeting scheduled for June third, July first, and August fifth, two thousand twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, five zero.
And then the second item Dr. Mike had brought up was in regard to staying virtual. Do we know the status of the House bill that's extending the virtual meetings? Do we know where we are with that?
Ah, I don't know where we are with the virtual. I, I would say, if I had to say, I'd say it's your choice. Yeah, I looked into it, and we would be permitted to hold public meetings because up until that order, it was still, we're only supposed to have ten people in a room. But we would, we would have to review before, you know, what are the, you know, the particulars of that, of the new order. So I don't know if it's unlimited people, if you still have a number you can have, so I need to check on that.
So I recommend then for June to stay with the virtual. And Dr. Mike, if you can bring the board additional information to the June meeting, and we can decide then based on the updated circumstances and at that point, at what date, we can return to in-person meetings and what the structure would be. Is the board?
I can do that.
Is the board?
I as well. I, I don't, you know, either way, if we go back to regular or continue on virtual, I'm fine with that. I think one main concern that people have is they want to have the opportunity for people speaks. So if we do continue on virtual, is there any option that we can get people, you know, into the meetings to, you know, be visually here and, you know, share what they have to say for people speaks?
I think we had a couple options before with recording, or, you know, we can have, we certainly could have them live. I mean, Ben could do that. It's just a matter of, you know, how, how you want to do that.
Now, what are the current limits after June second as far as people indoors? Are they totally, you know, nothing at all then?
I'm not, I think there, I'm pretty sure there's no limit, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I'd have to look at that.
Well, one thing, just to clarify for people, is the governor came out and said that he was lifting all of the mandates June second except for what, nursing homes and one other. And, but then three days later, he sent out a message through O D E to districts telling them to continue with the mandates for the school. So it kind of went back and forth there. There's been some discussion that I've heard that, you know, they're going back and forth, you know. So I don't know where they're at. Another thing to bring up is there was the question of, you know, kids being able to go to the last few days of school without masks, and I don't want that to go on the wayside because I think a lot of people want to allow the kids the last few days. And, you know, for our summer programming as well, are we going to continue with masking for that, or are we going to allow them to relax that a little bit?
Well, do, do you want me to address those now? I mean, I can, or I was going to do, you know, with Ben, but I can address those now.
Okay, yeah, if you could.
So it's, some of the districts are, are, you know, differ, differing opinions, and as you know, there's been conflicting information. So technically, from what I understand, the mask removal is if you are vaccinated, and virtually none of our students are vaccinated. So I talked to a couple of superintendents. Now, remember, they're finishing up. I mean, I think Louisville's graduating today, so we go a little bit into June, but the consensus that I heard was we would keep the masks till the end of the school year, and then summer, we would kind of put that in the hands of the adults. So obviously, a lot of our summer is going to be outside. You don't need a mask. I think that's reasonable. On the bus, though, they got, the state is still recommending that kids, kids wear a mask, so we would have some guidelines for summer, but we're So we would have some guidelines for summer, but we're anxious too to, you know, get our kids too out of those masks.
And, and as far as the vaccines go, is there any way the school can know if the kids have vaccines or not?
No, we don't, it's just like.
So, so to that, to that, we'll never know whether the kids are all vaccinated or none of them are vaccinated. I'm, I'm all for lifting that, given that I understand that there are some people that have concerns. And I do believe that some of the staff and teachers should be respected if they, if they want to have kids wear masks in their rooms. I understand that and I think that the, the students should be able to respect that as well. But I think as long as, you know, if the, if we get confirmation that the mandate has been lifted, I, I think we should move forward and allow the, the kids to be able to, you know, after June 2nd, be able to, you know, decide whether they want to wear a mask or not.
Well, now remember, I, is the age twelve or fourteen, so our little kids are not eligible for vaccine. So it wouldn't be any of our elementary kids and most of our middle school, it would just be our high school. But I can, you know, I could, I could check on that, I mean.
Okay.
I don't want to get us into a problem or, and I'm sure districts are doing different things with that.
Okay, I just wanted to know where, where I was at on it so that that's out there, so that, you know, we can move forward in a direction or another. I'm not saying that if we lift the mask policy that people aren't allowed to wear masks. I mean, people, people that feel they need the mask, they can wear a mask or two masks or, you know, and if the teachers would like kids wearing masks in their class, I'm all for that as well. But I, I think that, you know, the teachers and students should be, and their parents should be given the option.
Okay.
Josh, what's your recommendation then on the parents that want the children in the classroom to be wearing masks? Because they believe in that for their own student.
I believe they can have their students wear masks.
But the whole class, I mean, if they were, if that is something they wanted, so, I mean.
I, I, I don't think one parent gets to decide, you know, what every other kid in the class has to do. I, I mean, they can do what they believe is right to protect their child, but I, I don't think it's fair to the other parents that don't, don't believe it's necessary for their kid to wear a mask to be forced to.
So I think that translates to, I think that translates to the public meetings too. If we, we need to open them up to the public, the community wants to, to be able to attend. And if someone wants to wear a mask, they can wear a mask if they feel better like that. You know, there's no conclusion for them doing that.
I'm fine with that as well, as I said before. Sorry about the birds.
Okay, so we are at a virtual meeting for June. Dr. Mike will bring us additional information on any updates that he receives and the new House bill that's being proposed. And we'll give us additional information and we can make a decision at the June meeting. As far as public participation, I do just want to remind everybody that we do have the option in board policy for written documents to be submitted to the board, which the board will read. So the community has had the opportunity for public participation through all of this virtual meeting, as well as they can reach out to us by phone or email.
So since we had the discussions, so I guess I'm, I need some direction from the board. If the mandate is, if you're not vaccinated, you have to wear a mask. Does the board want to go against that mandate and take away the mask, make masks optional?
I'm not for taking away masks, I'm for giving people the choice to wear a mask or not.
I would be in favor of following the governor's direction if you're not vaccinated and you're, you're recommended to wear a mask. I, I would be in favor of supporting that.
Yep, I think it comes down to individual responsibility as well. You shouldn't go maskless if you're not vaccinated. But it's, it's your personal decision and people can wear masks if they're vaccinated and they still think they need that protection.
Okay, let, let's see where it goes.
That didn't help, probably didn't.
Let me look at the newest mandate. We've had no legal update on this, so I, I don't know. Well, let me see what I can find out.
Okay. Just to summarize on this one then, so the meetings for, the first meeting of the month through June, July, and August have been canceled. The June meeting will remain virtual and the discussion will take place at the June meeting as to how we proceed from there.
Okay.
And so administrator reports.
Okay, so you may remember in May, I am required to let you know a little bit about food service. Just so you know, we have our food service person, Regine Cole. Patty and I both have some experience with food service and managing food service. And really, all I'm letting you know, you have the letter there, is that we are following the standards and policies set up by Ohio Revised Code and that food services continues to monitor nutrition standards. And we make changes and revisions. So we're, you know, a lot of the food guidelines come from the federal government through Ohio Department of Ed. And we follow those requirements. And you don't need a vote or anything on that, I'm just, just able to let you know that.
Okay, thank you.
And our next item, and this is also, a lot of favorites for me at this board meeting. There's almost no better pleasure than to tell a board, here is the list of people that we believe are graduating. We are sending these young men and women out into the world. And we believe they have had a great education at Marlinton, whether they've been here K to 12 or just a little bit of time. And we're proud of our graduates. And I have for you the tentative list, of course, they often meet the final requirements. And the list you have there before you. And we, in Ohio, as a tradition, the board votes on that list.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the 2021 graduation of the following student list as attached? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I would like to say congratulations to all of our seniors this year.
Congratulations, everybody.
And please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries? Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, five-zero.
And just before we move to treasurer's report, since we won't have an early June board meeting, I'll be contacting the board with particulars about, you know, would you like to come to graduation? I, I need to get the traditions that Marlinton does, you know, who stands where, who hands out the plumas. So all of that information, we will be getting out to the board members and we will go from there.
But the location, can you mention?
We are, there was a little bit of, I don't know, people questioning, but we are at the Canton Civic Center. We just couldn't get the connection with Mount Union in time. Mount wasn't quite ready at the time to say, go ahead and use our indoor facility. And we'll be at the Canton Civic Center, there's no need for tickets, plenty of room. If people desire to spread out, they can spread out. So that's where we will be.
Dr. Mike, we got a announcement from Mr. Spandiel that said eight tickets per graduate, there's no need for tickets.
Ah, I'm not aware that we, that we said we have need for tickets, but I will, I'll have to check on that. Usually, we don't do tickets because it's so huge.
Well, it was going to be four, now it's eight.
I, I'm wondering if that was following the mandate of the size, you know, you could only have twenty-five percent and then fifty percent. So I, I'm not aware, I'll have to check on that. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was in the last two days, that message came through.
Okay, ah, I was not aware. I guess we'll have to get, we'll do an announcement, I'll get something out, some clarification.
Thank you. Under the treasurer's agenda, Finance Committee Report, Mrs. Humphries? Did you want to say anything on the Finance Committee Report?
I mean, I just, I, here, I mean, the, the updated forecast is pretty much the same as it was. It sounds like, we heard there were four hundred thousand dollars in cost reductions at this point, with two teaching positions being eliminated in, in one way or another, classified positions and reduction in some salaries. But, but there is a domino effect of staff moving around. And the enrollment trends that are being used are that it's continuing and decreasing in a decreasing trend and the funding formula is about to change. And I think, Dr. Main, you thought it was July that that would probably happen, that the funding formula would come out.
Yes, we know, we should know closer to July if they're changing that or not. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Humphries.
Thank you.
And the treasurer has been able to reallocate expenses out of the general fund using the ESSER II COVID funds and also the health and wellness funds, which does affect the bottom line of the five-year forecast. And it does give Marlinton a balanced budget for this fiscal year. The four hundred thousand of cost reductions, it's my understanding, and Patty can clarify this, that that is not yet in this five-year forecast, that they're still working on those numbers. So that will be later put into the budget, that reduction, as well as none of the ESSER III money has been, the, the expenses that will be reducing because of that, that is also not yet in this five-year forecast. And so I, I think the forecast looks better than the last one. And despite the circumstances of why, during COVID and everything, it's better than the last one. With that, I'll, I'll turn that over to Patty.
Thank you, Mrs. Gabriel. Tonight, we have with us Ryan Gazzoni from Forecast Five. And we ask him to come in so that he can walk us through some of those charts and some of that data, just to give us another overview of where we're at. We, not a lot has changed, and you are correct, just some ESSER funds have been added to, to do some reduction of expenditures. But you, that is correct, that the ESSER IIIs, for the most part, those funds are not in here, as well as the four hundred, approximately forty, four hundred thousand in reduction due to retirements, et cetera. Ryan? Take it away.
I will show my screen here. And so the, the five-year forecast is a summary view, just supplying it by where your revenue stands, where your expenditure stands, and we'll go into a little bit more detail. As stated, the district used over one point five million dollars of ESSER funds. And as a result, that created an operating surplus this year. That was one-time money, as noted, there is ESSER III money that the school district is still awaiting to hear what they are going to submit their plans for where they can spend that on. And then there, I will also show you scenario later with the ESSER III funds on some preliminary data, as well as the four hundred thousand dollars cuts. One thing to note is that next year, just because the district uses ESSER funds next year, the deficit spending continues because it is one-time money, so it's kind of a temporary mandate for this year, looking at where the district is next year and, and keeping your eye on how that deficit grows as you get to 2025. There are a couple of notes I want to make about what has happened since the last time we've talked. One of those is with your local tax revenue. When you look at local tax revenue, we have two knowns right now, we know what your tax values are, so what the value of property is, we know what the milage rate is. There's two unknowns that we are able to estimate using data. One is what is your collection rate? So how many of your taxpayers are actually going to pay their taxes? The district has historically been close to a hundred percent collection on their gross collections, that includes delinquencies. When you take current collections plus delinquencies, and so we've estimated for this year, it's going to be over ninety-nine percent collection rate. And then also you have what's called a collection split. A collection split is how many taxpayers pay their taxes the first half of the year, which is the spring, and how many payers in the fall. And so what we know right now is compared to our estimate for your spring, the district's up a little bit over four hundred thousand dollars from what we were estimating. Looking at your delinquency collections and knowing that the district has historically been around a gross collection rate of a hundred percent, and we have you close to a hundred percent. The data is showing right now that it's probably the overestimates, the, the collecting over the estimate is probably due to a collection split. And what that means is, is that, and you can see it here, you're going to get about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more this year. Let me scoot that down a little bit. And then, so you're going to get off three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less next year. And that's why you kind of see it go up and down and then come back up where we then assume a normal collection split moving forward. So there's really no way for us to know until the fall as, if it is indeed all collection split or not. We're estimating of the four hundred and twenty-six thousand, about three hundred and fifty thousand is due to, like we said, collection splits, there's just timing. You can see your renewal levies are out here. And so overall, if you didn't have that issue with the collection split, you're pretty flat on your, on your funding levels. As well as you can see where, where your pipelines came in at, we have all those off the most recent appeals. So until this goes to the litigation and there's an outcome from that, we will not know if the, if the pipeline's going to owe you guys more money or if they're going to be successful in the request to have their tax values lowered.
Can I ask you a question on the pipeline? How do, how do you report on, on these charts, how do you report the challenge portion from the pipeline? Or is that just not on here?
It's not on here, it's, so we're doing it based on a fifty percent collection on all public utility. And we are pretty comfortable with that because for 2021, you can see that you collected, you're going to, you did collect two point four million dollars. And our estimate's worth an eight thousand dollars of what it actually came in for the spring. So we're pretty confident with that. But for the, for the amount that has been contested, that the pipeline has not paid, it is not reflected in here. So if they were unsuccessful in their litigation, then you would have a large amount of delinquencies come when that case is settled.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. For state revenue, as noted, there, we have you flat funded right now for state revenue. You do, you did have your COVID reductions last year and you had a partial restoration this year. And so essentially, you're going back to where you were in 2019 right now for 2022 through 2025. The only difference is there's a slight reduction because you do post casino revenue there. Casino revenue is based off of enrollment, it's not a significant source of revenue for the district. But based on your declining enrollment, we have estimated minor reductions like casino revenue. Just a note, what's going on with state revenue? So the governor introduces his budget, that has been done. And as part of his budget, he recommended that the, that districts basically get, continue getting what they got in 2019. So restore any COVID fundings and then the only increase in state aid would be wellness funds. So from that point, it then went to the House. The House came out with a completely different state funding formula that's been being worked on for the last couple of years called the Fair School Funding Plan. In that plan, there, if that was to come into play based off the simulations that have been published, the district would have about an eighty-six thousand dollar increase in revenue next year. It's, it's going to be phased in, the full plan, and in the following year, you'd have a two hundred and fifty dollar increase. So virtually no increase in, in 2023. If the plan was fully phased in, you'd actually have a reduction in revenue of about a hundred and ten thousand. So there's no significant increase in revenue, if any, coming right now from the two parts of the legislature that have proposed theirs. It currently sits in the Senate. We're expecting somewhere around the second week in June that they're going to have, they're going to vote out what they're proposing for funding. They'll then go to conference committee and then prior, hopefully prior to July 1st, we will know what the, the funding for us for the next two years. If it is significantly different, we will present an alternative forecast to the board. But right now, we basically have you flat funded. But right now, we basically have you flat funded. Some changes in your salary and benefits. The district did use, you can see you have a reduction in your total salaries this year. In total, the district used just over 1.5 million dollars in S R. You had right around a million, just over a million dollars that you used in S R funding to offset 2021 expenses. And as of right now, we don't have any S R three money being used. I will show you a scenario here in a few minutes with using S R three money. So you can see that this temporary dip was, was just because of S R and then you go back on your historic trend. The same thing with benefits, you had about $200,000 use of S R funds for this year as well. You did get your rates from your health insurance consortium for next year. It came in lower. We had you at about 7%. I think it came at 3.9. So that has been factored into the forecast, as well as we continued two preem holidays. And you did get two preem holidays next year. So there is two preem holidays in each year of the forecast. Besides that, not a lot of changes. The, the other big change I'll note is instead of using in the second half of the year, transferring out 800,000 of the pipeline money into the P I fund, you, you reduced that by 317,000 because you used 317,000 of S R funds to pay for the air quality improvements at the elementary school. So that, those were reduced as well. When we look at your purchased services, these are going to be, this is your, your largest non-general fund expense. If I can find that here. I'm sorry, non-salary expense. And those continue to come in about where we, we estimated. There were no significant changes there. You can see in 22, we do have now have an increase in contracted services. That's due to, because you're going negotiations, provides up for some additional funding as a result for, for legal costs for negotiations. Besides that, it goes back down in 23 and stays pretty consistent. Your tuition costs are your biggest unknown. You can see you've had some pretty big increases each year in tuition costs. We did maintain them at the 2021 levels and included inflationary growth moving forward of, of around 2% increasing those. So it's a little bit less of an increase each year than what you've had historically. But this is by far your largest purchase service. Once you take out tuition and contracted services, you're basically left with some repair costs. We do have those slightly reduced starting next year compared to where we were this year, 376. And then you have some utility costs and communication costs. One other thing I wanted to note is with your supplies. In your supplies, you will notice that there is very little allocated in 2022 and 2023 for textbooks. The reason for that is the district has decided to use S R funds to pay for textbooks in these two years that have been taken out of the general fund. However, we have increased your transportation costs to be back at pre-COVID levels around 285,000. So those were, those are basically the biggest changes since we, we met in, in February to review the forecast. As noted though, that the district right now is projected to continue to spend down its cash balance. Back in 2016, we looked today, you had a cash balance of about 9 million, and the district's been deficit spending a portion of that each year. And it starts to really ramp up next year, and then you can see you're out of cash by 2024. So we do have for you though, illustrate, there's $400,000 in cuts that have been proposed. And so I'm going to show you a scenario that includes those $400,000 of cuts and what that looks like from a forecast perspective. This is not the forecast the board will be approving, but I know there's some conversation about wanting to see what that meant to the, to the bottom line. And so when you look at that $400,000 cuts, that's what this is including here. The district still has deficit spending, but it does start to reduce it in 22, down about 2.2 million. And then you can see moving forward where those, where those cuts go. There was also another request to say, what if we used S R fun, S R three funds as well? And so what we modeled in this, this third scenario was if the district used half a million dollars of S R funds each year for salary and benefits from 2022 through 2024, and then those costs would return to the district in 2025. And so if you were able to offset an additional 1.5 million dollars over a three-year period with S R funds, you would have a cash balance in 2024, still have a negative cash balance in 2025. The, the important things to note with that though is, is you still have significant deficit spending out here. So it's kind of those funds, if you are approved to use those, is a temporary cut, a kind of a Band-Aid for 22 and 23 and 24. The $400,000 cut that is incorporated into these numbers as well is a permanent cut, so those don't come back. And it helps to reduce this, but the district still would have some significant holes that they'd want to fill either by increasing revenue or, or decreasing additional expenses. The sooner you address those, the easier it is, not that making cuts at any time are easy, or increasing revenues easy at any time. But the farther out you get, the more, the more is needed to close that gap.
Brian, could you clarify the total amount of S R three funds that are coming to Marlington? And how you came up with the figure to reduce operating expenses?
So just working with the superintendent and treasurer, they had had conversations about what they were going to use the S R three funds for. I believe that they told me it was around $4 million. And based on what the current projects have been outlined, they were hoping that they'd be able to use a half a million a year, the total 1.5 million to offset operating costs. So met within a day, and they'd asked that I include a scenario showing what that would look like.
Thank you.
Any other questions I can answer for you?
Hey, Ryan, with the 400,000 cuts, what year did you say we would deplete the cash balance?
Without using S R funds and just the 400,000 cuts, you'd be out of money in 2024.
2024 versus right now, where are we at?
With no cuts and no S R fund, additional S R funds being used, S R three, you're out of money in 2024. It's just the amount. You can see this is the scenario with, that's your, the forecast that's been provided to you. You're def, you're out of money by about 841,000 in 2024. And then looking at just the $400,000 in cuts and not using any S R funds by 2024, that cash balance, let me bring that up. So you actually have, I'm sorry, I misspoke. You have a positive cash balance of 364 in 2024.
$364?
Uh, 364.
2023?
Uh, 2024.
Oh, 2024. And how much, how much was the deficit in 2024 for the prior?
841,000, I believe. Without cutting the 400,000.
Okay.
Patty and Dr. Mike, you anticipate being able to implement those $400,000 cuts starting with this very next fiscal year? Is that what we're, we're gathering from this information?
Correct. We have, we have those, sorry Patty, that I, we have those outlined and it's just a little difficult sometimes in May to say exactly because we never know what's going to happen in May and June. People leave sometimes and you can shuffle things. You know, once you say we're even looking at something, then people think it's carved in stone. So the only question I had, there was some, you know, we had talked about attempting to cut 450,000. This was before S R two and three funds. But then I heard today that some board members thought that figure is 800,000 or 600,000. So I mean, if I could just have some clarification, these, these cuts that we made are already severe in a district that has made lots of cuts the last couple of years. Are we all on the same page with?
The comment I, I had made to Patty, and I'll clarify that myself because I made the comment with the conversation I had with Patty, is when you first started talking about cuts and didn't put any figure on it, I just told her that in my mind, I was just anticipating probably in the neighborhood of 600 to 700,000 dollars the cuts. And then you came in at 450. I think you projected 450, and now it's closer to four. I think that's a good start. I think we always have to look at our cost and you know, have to always work on where, where can we cut. And I know that's difficult because as you're providing services to students and, and already running, running a tight ship, it's, it is difficult. But I think we do have to look at all the expenses we're spending all the way along and so that we can build the confidence of our community to support us if they can see where we're cutting. And when we have to ask them for money, we hope that they are able to help us out.
And I would, that makes me feel better, and I agree, I agree with you. But I think people, we should know that we spend many hours almost every day talking about expenses. It's not like some fleeting thought that we don't, you know, look at these things. There's only so many hours in a day. There's lots of things going on at Marlington. We're severely understaffed. And we look at these things every day. Patty and I, Patty's only in the district two days a week. But we talk on the phone, you know. So we are indeed, I, I just feel like a broken record, but we are indeed looking at those things every day. So I guess that's all I have to say.
Yeah. Well, and while we're on this topic, Dr. Mike would like the board to give him direction on, on timing for a levy. I don't think he's asking for the amount or the type of levy at this point. I think he's asking, does the board want him to pursue the levy for November? Or wait and pursue it for spring? So let's open up that for discussion and give him some direction on what the board is thinking.
I think given the fact that we have this extra S R money in there, that's given us a cushion to where this isn't as urgent as it was earlier this year. I think it would be a good choice to put it on for the spring. That way it would give a lot more time to mount a levy campaign. And to put more time into making it successful. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you.
I would say since Dr. Mike and Dr. Main have both said that, and actually Ryan tonight, you know, the longer you wait to address something, the worse the problem gets and the higher the amount has to go. That, that seems to be their recommendation or their thoughts on it. So in my opinion, if that's the thought of doing a levy, you would want to do it sooner rather than later. Since they've already stated that.
Ryan, Dr. Mike, given the current circumstances with the new S R money coming in, do you think it's going to make a huge difference between November and spring? Versus having a rushed levy campaign or having time to have a more successful campaign?
The, you're basically looking at for a full collection, depending on the amount you went, it's going to be an additional year. So if you passed one in November versus, let's say, May, it's, you're going to be an entire year before you get a full collection. Because if you pass it in May or November, the following year, it doesn't matter. It's based on the, the tax years and when it actually goes into effect. So it would probably affect, it could potentially affect slightly the, the amount that you're going to go for for a levy. Whereas you might go for, let's say, I could give you different scenarios. Let's say 5.5 mil, you might, 5.5 to 6, you might have to go if you wait till an, an extra year, you might be looking at, at six to six and a half mils.
Well, previously when we talked about this, we were given those numbers. And I, I guess we were looking at $3 million a year. And what I'm looking at is what has changed since then, that the numbers we didn't have then are the S R three money, which is actually 4 million. That would be 1 million in addition to the 3 million we wouldn't have if we put it on the ballot this year.
Yeah, the one, the one thing that I would, would comment on that is when I the, the one part that you want to look at, that I try and direct your eyes to is, is this line here. You know, looking at it, the cash balance, it would kind of like your savings account, and you don't want to draw this down to zero. And so you want to look at what it takes to make this zero. Because if you're able to have a balanced budget, then you're able to, to increase your cash balance, and then the longer the money's going to last. The other things you want to take into consideration is, and we can do simulations for you, is depending on which year it goes, how long do you want the levy to last? Because that's what's going to drive how much you have to go for and when you go. If, if you said we want the levy to last five years, we could model that. And what does that look like? At a lower milage rate, passing sooner? Or if you said we want it to last, you know, five years at, at a slightly higher one, how long does that last? But, but this is where you want to look at. And, and the S R money doesn't necessarily affect this in the long run. It's one-time money, so it's going to affect, as you can see, it affected this line item, but did not affect any of these line items. It stays the same. So it's, it's kind of like a temporary Band-Aid, and then you start dipping back in here.
I, I guess, I guess the point I was making was that if we put it on the levy this year and pass it, we're going to collect around $3 million.
Yeah, if you passed it in November of '21, you would get half of that in 2022 and then a full collection in 2023. And so if you passed it in May or November of '22, you get, you get 1.5 million, let's say, in '23, and then the full 3 in '24.
Okay. And, and while we're on this, and I don't know if you're the right person to ask this, but you probably know the answer. As far as, you know, we're looking at the options for, hold on a second, motorcycle. We're looking at the options between income tax and the real estate levy. And what effect does the valuation of that pipeline have as far as income tax collection? Are they going to pay more taxes towards the district if we do a real estate levy?
I don't know if they'd pay any tax, income tax. I'd have to check on that for you. I'm not sure if they'd.
No, 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 I'm not asking about the, I'm talking just the real estate portion. They would pay a higher rate, correct?
They would pay the, the milage rate on the value. They'd be charged the value. And so this is an interesting question. So if you go for $3 million and the pipeline valuations included in that, you may have to make the assumption you're going to go for, for a dollar amount. You want to, you want to go for a dollar amount, knowing that, that you may never get that pipeline money, if that makes sense. So they'd be, they'd be taxed, and the, the value would be figured on their full voted rate, even though right now they're paying a much lower percentage because they've appealed it and they're not paying that additional amount.
So, but it would, it would be in addition to what's currently valued though, correct?
If you put $3 million on the ballot, if you did an emergency levy, it's going to be taxed at three, you're going to bring in 3 million based on all of the tax values in the district.
Okay.
But is that not a problem? And the pipeline value is going to go down regardless what percent they're paying us. The value's going to go down. So as that decreases, that will in turn shift a larger burden of that to our local taxpayers, our residents here.
You, you're correct. And what's going to happen there is for the, until the courts decide on that, that litigation, if you went, let's say for 300, 3 million dollars, and I don't have, I'd have to figure out with the exact amount the pipeline would own, would owe versus what they're going to pay. They, you may only collect 2.5 million on that until that court decision's done. And then if the court decision is in their favor, then you would get 3 million after it's settled. But the additional burden, because there's, their valuation is lower, would be spread among all the other taxpayers in the community.
Right. And then as their value decreases, because the pipeline does decrease in value, that would just in the formula, that would just then shift the value over to our residents, wouldn't it?
It would. And then as you go through revaluation trial updates, if property values increase, that would offset a little bit, but you, your, your, your concept is correct.
I have a question on your chart here. So this chart that you have on the screen, it does not show the $400,000 expense reduction each year starting next year, nor does it show S R three. Is that correct?
This one does show the cuts. So I.
Does show the cuts, but not S R three?
Correct. And I have another one with S R three and the cuts.
And it doesn't show any additional pipeline money except for what? And it doesn't show any additional pipeline money except for what, um, the undisputed portion, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Josh, sorry.
Well, that's okay. I, I was just going to say that I'm, I'm a glass half full type of person. And I would look at it as the burden isn't going to be shifted on to the public as that depreciates as much as having them as a tax base alleviates the burden from the public, uh, you know, in the first few years.
Yeah. And the, and the one other comment I wanted to, um, clarify for you, in income tax, you need more time. It takes longer to ramp up than just, um, getting it, uh, the full collection at the following year. So we would, i- if that's the direction that the district is considering, you, we would have Patty contact the Hot Department Taxation. We would want to get estimates from them. And they can provide us with what the full ramp up time is to do a full collection on income tax. It, it's a little bit longer of a process than a property tax.
It's my opinion that's worth looking into, um, because, um, from what I've heard at various seminars, that income tax levies work better in rural districts. So that the burden of the tax levies don't fall on to fewer taxpayers. Um, and, uh, I think it's worth looking into and having some serious discussion on income tax.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely, I can definitely talk with Patty, give her the contacts, the O E T to get those simulations. And then we could model and show what those look like and what those rates would look like in comparison to a property tax.
Can anyone clarify the date of the hearing that, for the Nexus Pipeline, where it's scheduled right now?
I'd have to look. They're having preliminary conversations or preliminary, um, I can, you know, technical term. Um, it was supposed to be starting within the next month or two, but I can look into it to try and see if, if it's actually started or not.
I don't know how many more times they can defer, but, um, it would be good to know one way or the other, where we are with the pipeline money. It makes it difficult for us to make a decision as to how much to ask for when we, when there are so many unknowns.
Yeah. If they are successful, um, that's probably the worst case scenario for the district, obviously for them to be successful. If they're successful initially, then you're going to know right away. If they are unsuccessful, this could drag out. They could take it all the way to Supreme Court and it could be, um, extended period of time. So I think what the first, um, decision is of the courts will kind of as an indication of where and how long it might be for the unknown.
Just so you know, the next, uh, Nexus hearing is November 10th, 2021.
So it sounds like they have extended that a little bit.
Yeah, it was originally supposed to be this month. And according to Becky Prince Horn's April 9th email, it's now November 10th, 2021. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's Rover. February 7th, 2022 is Nexus. So we're almost a year out.
What'd you say, February 22 for?
February 7th, 2022.
Okay.
The Nexus. That other one is Rover.
Right. Okay. Rover might be a good indication too, where we.
It will be. I would say, I say, would say you're correct.
Um, so, um, I, ba- based on us not having all the information, we need to know how much of the Esser three funds can be put in. And we need time to formulate a plan for collection and not having a firm number for our, uh, our expense reductions. Um, I think we should do the campaign correctly, not do a hurry up and rush one, but, um, do it in the spring. And then that would give us time to look at both options, weigh out income tax versus real estate tax and, and give it the appropriate attention. Dr. Mason? Do you have any opinion for November or May?
It, it doesn't matter.
Danielle?
I'm in full support of waiting, just so we're not rushed and we can get the information out there in a timely manner.
Dr. Mike and Patty, what's, what's your thoughts?
Um, I'm okay with May. I would definitely say absolutely no later. And, uh, I think you all know I'm in favor of trying an in- income tax. If you asked me today, I would say my best advice to you is to try and earn income tax. So that's, that's where I am.
Patty, did you want to weigh in on any of this?
I, whatever you direct us to do, I'm, I'm with the board. Um.
So I guess at this point, it sounds like, uh, the majority would lean towards May. Dr. Mike is in favor of May. Um, so you'll bring back to the board when you have the information we need to start considering is, is that what we should expect whenever you start gathering that? And get more form figures, firm figures and perhaps, um, if, if Ryan can give us just an internal five-year forecast updated as we go with the, once you know your expense figures and your Esser funds that are going to actually impact, um, if he could just give us an internal one that wouldn't need to be going to the state, that would be helpful.
We can do that. Yep.
Any more questions for Ryan? I want to keep you longer than we have to.
I'm good. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. The information.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Ryan. You're truly an expert. He is ex, he's an expert at analyzing all of that data. Um, and we're very fortunate to have his input.
Are there any further questions on the five-year forecast for Patty or Dr. Mike? Can't remember now. Patty, we have a motion on the table. Is that, or haven't we asked for that yet?
We do not.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the five-year forecast as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero. The next act- action item on the treasurer's agenda is to, um, approve the minutes from May 6th, and those are attached.
Is there a motion for the Marlington Local Board of Education to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the minutes of the following meeting, which is May 6th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
abstain.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Four one. The next action item is to approve the financial reports. We have the, um, the reconciliat- reconciliation. We have, um, a detailed report, financial report, and also, um, our check pay report.
Is there a motion for the Marlington Local Board of Education to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the financial reports? An overview of receipts and expenditures for the period ending April 30th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Patty, do you want to go over the reports?
I can do that. First, we have our, our fund balances for all of our funds. Again, um, one good thing to look at it would be the month-to-date receipts versus the expenditures and also the, um, receipts and expenditures for, uh, the, the year. And those are the second and fourth columns, as well as the third and the fifth columns. If you notice on the second page, we talked, we spoke a little bit about the student health and wellness funds uh, during the forecast that you will find at the top of the second page, um, under four, six, seven, student wellness and success funds. The next one is our, our checks for the month. Not too much out of the ordinary. We had a few repairs. Um, uh, if you notice, uh, almost to the bottom of the second page, uh, you will see the amount for the Stark County Sheriff. And that again is, um, part of those funds from our health and wellness. Um, so those are not general funds that we're extending there. Um, I believe that's about it unless you have questions. And of course, we have the cash reconciliation, which just shows that we have balance for the month. Questions?
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
abstain.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Four zero, four, one. The next, um, item on the agenda for the treasurer is the fund transfer. And we are just asking the board to approve a transfer of funds from our general fund to our benefits fund, oh, 35. We've had some retirements this year and, um, it's just simply the fund that we have to, to address those expenses from.
Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendation for an inter-fund transfer of $125,000 from the general fund, oh, oh, one, to the termination of benefits fund, zero, three, five?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions? I mean, is there any discussion? Patty, is that, uh, the amount you expect to pay out or is that the amount that just has accrued this year?
That, we have a bit of funds already in there. Um, so we have a little bit left, uh, a little bit over that to pay out, but that's a pretty good estimate.
Okay. And that is for our retirees on accumulation of their sick time that they haven't used and that sort of thing?
Correct. Correct.
There any further questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero. And the last item on the treasurer's agenda is, uh, a motion, we're asking the board to approve the April donations. We had $500 donated to Marlington High School from DeHaas and $50 from Anthony and Karen Humphries to Marlington High School.
Is there a motion for the Marlington Local Board of Education to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the donations as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I want to thank our donors, um, the DeHaas and Karen. Thank you very much for your generosity. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero.
Personnel, Dr. Mike?
Okay. Good evening again, everybody. Uh, the first item I have for extended days. And you have, uh, provided you with a list of the people that work extended days and how many they get.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the extended days for 2021 to 2022 school year as listed on the attachment?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Um, Dr. Mike, I, I know you and Patty have been, uh, auditing the, uh, personnel and all the costs. And if you could perhaps maybe just go over the list and maybe just explain a little bit what, uh, these extended days are for and, and just the general need for them and, and why you're recommending these to the board.
Sure, I, I can do that. So, um, there are things by law that take place over the summer. And, you know, people have to do those things. Um, a, a high school counselor has a lot, as you can imagine. Uh, they couldn't just be done the last day of school. Who would do transcripts, communicate with colleges? They couldn't just start the first day of school. Who would do schedules? That's not out of the ordinary for middle and, you know, secondary counselors. And there usually is one that has more because they take the lead more with the colleges and, and things of that nature. Um, we wouldn't have band camp if we wouldn't be ready. We have football games before the school season, before school starts. Um, so that's not unusual. Um, anywhere I've been, the Ag and Horticulture teachers work the year round. That's been cut. But they still need some days, uh, to take care of things. We do not have a technology director at Marlington, so that, that person has been doing two jobs. Um, obviously we should have a tech director all summer. It's only 20 days. Um, middle school dean of students, again, with closing out the middle school, the middle school does not have an assistant principal. Uh, there are, you know, things that have to be done before the actual, the first day back. Um, CBI always also used to be, I'm sure, year round. That's down to three days. Um, so there, there aren't, you know, any summer, he just has to finish up the paperwork. Um, school psychologists, they have to be on duty to test kids over the summer. Anytime a parent requests, there are things they're involved with kindergarten, uh, testing, um, musical and drama. Um, there's prep work, getting ready for those first days of school, show choir things. Digital Academy, um, that still has to work and operate over the summer. So that person has to be in charge of all the summer credit recovery, making sure things go correctly. And then, uh, speech pathologists, the same, if people need tested or require services over the summer, we're required to, to do those. So that's kind of a really quick rundown of the, of these.
Thank you. Um, are there, is there any further discussion? Please call the roll. You're on mute, Patty.
Sorry. Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Was that a yes? Oh, thank you. Dr. Mason?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero.
Okay. Um, I always make sure I explain to the board and the public watching, um, with certain positions, especially positions that are federally funded, our federal funds usually do not come in till July. So every school district non-renews their tutors. Um, it's not, these people did a fine job. There's nothing, they didn't do anything wrong. They just, this list of people are tutors that we non-renew over the summer. And then our hope is we get the same amount or more federal funds and then we bring them all back. And then I think we can put, uh, long-term subs certified, uh, in with this vote. Uh, obviously, um, we don't know for sure next year about long-term subs. So we have one that, well, actually this particular, uh, did a complete long-term sub, I think the whole year, almost all year. So obviously that teacher's coming back. We would not need this person. Or that may be possibly one of the jobs we eliminated. So we, we would need a vote for those non-renewals.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the non-renewal of the following individuals in one or more tutor positions at the end of the 2021 school year? due to availability of funding? And that list is as presented on your agenda, as well as the non-renewal of Joseph Walker as long-term substitute at the end of the 2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero.
Moving along, we have two staff members certified who have fulfilled the requirements for continuing contract. Tyler Cosma and Rayel Norman. So I'm recommending we grant their continuing contracts.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for continuing contracts beginning with the 2021, 2022 school year for the following Tyler Cosma and Rayel Norman?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero.
And then your next item, you have a list there of certified limited teaching contracts. And those are presented to you there in the attachments.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the following limited teaching contracts per the attached list?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys? Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero.
The next list you have is classified reduction in force. Again, same with certified, these are folks that funding is pending. So we hope then, if needed, to bring them back. But at this point, we have to non-renew that list.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the reductions in force for the following individuals at the end of the 2020, 2021 school year by classification? And that list is as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero.
Then your next item, seven, eight, and nine are all classified employees who are on limited contracts. And if you're okay with that, those are presented in each line item there. That only requires one roll call, one vote, if you are okay with that.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the following staff members to be granted their third two-year limited contract beginning with the 2021, 22 school year for Ohio Vice Code 3319081. The second group will be granted their second two-year limited contract beginning with the 21, 22 school year of Ohio Vice Code 3319081. And the third group will be granted their first two-year limited contract beginning with the 21, 22 school year, Ohio Vice Code 3319081. And those lists are as presented in each of those categories.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys? Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero.
Okay, your next item there is summer school employment, and this is employment for all of our summer programs. Just a reminder, these folks are all paid on a time card. They're not full-time people over the summer. They do various things for our programs. And remember, we have an exciting summer coming up for our kids. So these are the folks that are going to help us out with that.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the attached list for the 2021 summer school program? And that list is as attached.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero.
And the last item there, number 11, those are the supplemental contracts I have for you now. They're mostly athletics to be approved. There are a couple of co-curriculars on there. But I will then be bringing you another list of the more co-curricular and then, you know, department chairs, mentors, those types of things when we finalize that in June.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the following 2021 summer supplemental positions as listed on the attached document?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero.
Thank you. That was a long list of folks. So thank you.
The next Board of Education meeting will be June 17th, 2021 at 7:00 PM via electronic remote technology. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. Do a second.
Everybody's having such a good time.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys? Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved. Five zero.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night, everybody.